Are we good? Welcome to the Bellevue City Council. It is council meeting. It is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll remain standing for the invocation, Father Tom Jones is here from the Church of the Holy Spirit at 1305 Thomas Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city on this election day, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our city council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witness about the issues at hand, and enable those who approach this council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns, so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the options before them. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day. The choices they make are made with right intentions, with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the public resources they have been entrusted with, and in the best interest of those they serve. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city and of this great land is more important than our differences, so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey, and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless all those who gather in this place, that they may know your love and grace, and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Bless you as well. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
And Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to amend the agenda to move item fifteen, the resolution for the redevelopment plan, to put it together so it would be right after the liquor licenses.
We have a second for that? So we have motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon, to move item fifteen right after the liquor license. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Please vote.
Is it working, Mr. Burns?
No, it just says electronic voting is in process.
See if I can do it for you. And your vote was gonna be?
Yes.
All voting yes?
Thank you. We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve the agenda now as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Same thing.
Actually, give me one second. I was actually under Scott Hankins thing. I didn't realize it, so I have to.
Gotcha. All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. A motion for the consent. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion. We approve the consent.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Cook. Any questions or comments? Any items moved? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Takes us to item seven, special presentation, seven A, presentation from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation on the third quarter. It looks like Andrew Rainbolt's here.
Yes. Thank you. I'll start with a quick apology. I, when we put this on the, on the calendar, I didn't realize tonight was election night, so I'll be extra brief. As I know, we all probably want to get back and see how things are going. But with that said, we have up on the screen our quarterly progress report. And the very, the briefest way to put it is the year started out okay, and then the second quarter was terrible, and the third quarter was actually really pretty good. And so we're kind of back on track, actually. As far as landed project goes, we have only landed one project this year, and that wasn't the third quarter. It was a spec warehouse of a Highway 50. And so that, we didn't associate any jobs with that, but because it has yet to be filled, but that is under construction. So the fourth quarter will be the best quarter for us as far as landed projects go. Looking at our project pipeline, I mentioned we had a really good third quarter. We had eighteen opportunities that we opened, and so seventeen of those were new to market, and one was an existing business. Of those, I looked and checked this afternoon, we had eight of those projects we submitted sites in Bellevue for. So of the seventeen new to market, eight of those included Bellevue site submissions. You can see on our project type there, this year's been kind of dominated by manufacturing, as was the third quarter. What I think we're seeing is a number of manufacturers that are, have been disrupted by the pandemic, are looking to either update their facilities or relocate them, and either their production or their warehousing of their products. And so that's really, I think, what we can attribute a lot of these projects that we're seeing to is people looking to either upgrade their facilities or relocate parts of their logistics. And we did have one prospect visit, and that was to Bellevue. We did already, we did find out that we didn't get that project, but that they did come and look at a site down in the LB-840 area, which I think is a great sign. As, you know, after last year, we've still got interest in that area from developers. So that was very encouraging, even though we didn't land the project. Looking at our last one, there's just our business interactions, kind of give you an idea of some of the other things that we've been doing on, working on, and that's business retention calls and business assistances, which are those are projects, or not quite projects, but efforts that we made to help area businesses that are already in Sarpy County, or looking at Sarpy County. And then, of course, our general business interaction. So just trying to give you an idea of some of the other things that we're doing besides just working on projects. We can skip this next page and go to the economic indicators. So as I mentioned, this year is really kind of turning out not too dissimilar from last year. We look at the top line there. Building permit valuations, as always, we say building permit valuations are not exactly capital investment, but we kind of use it as a proxy for that. If you just looked at this third quarter of 2020 and third quarter of 2019, it looks like we're way down, but that's because there was one permit last year for about $600 million. So you take that out of the equation, and we're looking pretty, pretty similar. I'll go down to single-family housing subdivisions. You can see Bellevue had a few in there, but we had 127 for the quarter. I'd say year-to-date, we're up about 137, 137 across the county. So housing has been pretty good for us this year. And the single-family, and so that's, that's platted lots on the housing permits. You can see Bellevue had seventy-three in this quarter, in the third quarter of 2020, as compared to fifty-five in the third quarter of 2019. Year-to-date, Bellevue's is up fifty versus last year, and the county's up 130. So you can see we're about 130 lots and 130 houses ahead of last year across the county. On the multifamily, we're actually down 220 units compared to last year, but that's not surprising, just the nature of the size of the projects. They're the kind of ebb and flow in size there. Other than that, we've got several active projects that we're working on with the city right now. We're excited about those, and so we'll continue to push those forward. And again, the things that we're always working on are infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure. And we're starting to see some movement in that area across the county, but, and that'll have a positive impact on Bellevue. So with that, happy to ask, answer any questions.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you. Andrew, when it talks about building permit valuations, that is, does that include residential and commercial?
It does.
So that's the total of everything that's happening in the city and the county? And it's the proposed valuation versus the actual assessed valuation, or?
It is, it's not the assessed valuation. It's not really a proposed valuation. I think it's for permitting purposes, there's a formula depending on the type of product. And it's not always exactly right. For some reason, storage facilities have a really high permit valuation. And so that can sometimes skew the numbers, but generally, the biggest driver is housing in most cases.
Perfect. Thank you.
More questions? Andrew, the warehouse that was specked on Highway 50, is that, how big is that? Is it a multi bay?
It's 300,000 square feet.
Wow.
And so it's R&amp;R developers out of Des Moines. This is their third warehouse that they've, they've put up. So they've got two that are about 250, and this third one's 300, so.
Can that be divided, or is it just?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So I don't know what, how many times it can be divided or whatnot, but they've got, they've got a, I guess, philosophy where they want to have an empty building ready to go for anybody.
Right.
And so that, so of the eight submissions that we had that included Bellevue, I didn't check, but I, I would say the majority of the other ones were for existing buildings. And so, and most of those are fairly large sizes, what we're seeing, so.
So has that been constructed yet, or it's in the plans?
It's under construction right now.
Due to be done?
I don't know exactly. I know they've got most of their walls up, and the last time I saw it, but I don't know, I don't know the exact finish date.
Okay.
They'll, they'll build it out to a certain point and then stop and wait for, at least typically, that's what happens.
Now on that, it's, it's a warehouse. Is that typically for storage, or whatever somebody wants to use a warehouse for?
Yeah, if it's subdivided, there can be kind of light industrial uses that go in. There's kind of a flex. It's modern kind of spec buildings that we're seeing like that typically have, you know, thirty-foot ceilings and large column spacing, but they can take on a number of different uses sometimes. Somebody put an office in the front and their warehouse in the back, or it might just all be used for warehouse.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrew.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Takes us to item eight, organizational matters. There are none this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Same with liquor licenses. We have no liquor licenses. And it takes us to number fifteen, which is the amended agenda. And that is resolution fifteen, fifteen A, resolution number 2020-42. Approve and authorize mayor to sign agreement with South Woods Manager LLC to implement the redevelopment plan. Want a motion, we can do a discussion. Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion. We approve fifteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. We want to go over who's planning. Does Jim want, Jim, do you want to talk about this, or?
If anybody has any specific questions, I know Tammy Palm's here. Jim Maristo can answer questions. I can answer questions if you have any specific during discussion.
Reason, what's the reason? Tammy, what's the reason for moving this ahead, just so all the council members know?
Just from a procedural standpoint, typically, we use the BUT4 test on redevelopment plans. So we want to procedurally have this ahead of the rezoning and the site plan approval quest. That's on the agenda coming up.
Any questions for Tammy? Okay. Any questions at all? Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch to approve resolution number 2020-42. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, eleven A, ordinances, eleven A, or eleven ordinances for adoption, eleven A, ordinance number 4013. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4013, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Forty-Fifth Street and Looking Glass Drive, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 4013.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 11A1, request to approve a preliminary plat for lots 122 through 124, Bell Lago South. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve preliminary plat for lots 122 through 124, Bell Lago South.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 11B, ordinance number 4015. Susan, would you read that ordinance description, please?
Ordinance number 4015, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Child's Road and Nebraska Drive, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 4015.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, Mr., when you come up here, I'd like to just know if you had a meeting with some of the neighbors that were here at our last meeting, and what was discussed and what was decided as far as to address our concerns.
Thank you. Mayor members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Cassianis, is with me as well. Thank you for the question, Mr. Cook. I was not at the meeting, but the developer did meet with him, and I, my understanding is, and she's here to talk specifically about it, but mainly what was talked about is the increase in the landscaping, and I think Tammy probably provided you with a increase in the, or a change in the landscape plan that provides for, you know, pretty dramatic change to the landscape plan by way of adding a number of trees on the north side next to the detention basin, and where that easement goes through, that hundred-foot easement. So there's a lot of landscaping there. I think what was talked about is that the fence really isn't, it's not a cost matter, it's an aesthetic matter. And so what they agreed to do is put in a lot more landscaping to hopefully appease the adjacent neighbors.
What was the reception from the neighbors?
You know, I'll, since I wasn't there, let me turn it over to Cassie, and she can explain what her experience was at the meeting.
Good evening. Cassianis, 2501, South 101st Avenue in Omaha. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We met with them last Thursday. I would say overall, reception was fair. They're still opposed to the overall development. But they were appreciative of the exhibits that we produced, cross-sections showing the upsizing in the trees that we're going to be putting along the north parking area, as well as some shrubbery and hedges to block any sort of light and hopefully mitigate sound. So I would say, while it wasn't 100% proponents of the project, we did get some feedback that they were appreciative of the upsizes in trees and the additional landscaping. They also did not bring up the fence at that time. We kind of just said it was an inferior aesthetic, but that we would rather put in more mature trees in the inception of the project, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Either Larry or Cassie, the landscape changed a little bit, and down on Columbus and Nebraska Drive in that corner, I'm just wondering, it looks like some of that vegetation was taken out, and one of the concerns of the neighbors was visibility going out onto Nebraska. I'm just wondering what the planting and whether or not that visibility is going to remain as good or almost as good as it is now.
I would say that yes. I guess the question I have maybe for Tammy is, is there a sightline on a quarter such as this, where an intersection where the landscaping is required to be pulled back? And I just, I'm not familiar with the code section that deals with what the distance has to be back, you know, as far as the landscaping. I know fences, for example, can't be, they have to have a certain setback, and I'm not sure if it's still, if it applies to landscaping as well, so maybe I'll.
It does, and bushes and things.
So Mr. Jobin is correct that there is a specific language in the ordinance in regards to fencing. There's also specific language regarding continuous hedge. I don't know that I would classify this particular plan as that. Obviously, site distance is something that we always look at when we look at landscape plans. Obviously, this is done by a landscape architect. It's something that, if it becomes a problem, if when I go out to do the inspection, I have concerns, we may have to make a few adjustments. But overall, that's something that is done through the landscape plan process here. I would say, based on what we require for fences and continuous hedge, they're going to be fine at that intersection. But again, we can always look at it as construction goes on, and if we need to make some minor adjustments, we can do that. We can work with the developer and make sure that that is met. I do have a copy of the amended landscape plan. I know some of the questions that came up is how we hold the developer's feet to the fire in regards to the changes that were made. There was, what I would say, significant increase in the size of the plantings. I have that on this amended landscape plan that will become part of the overall site plan approval process. It's part of the building permit with the approved site plan, if it's approved tonight, and they also cannot get a certificate of occupancy for the development until the landscaping is done per this revised landscape plan.
And the plan and the adjustments can be done. I just would like to see it done before it's a problem. That saves the developer from putting something in, and then. That saves the developer from putting something in and then having to move it or take it out.
Correct.
So if that's coordinated, I think that would be useful.
And it will be, um, that's something we'll do as part of the building permit because as part of the building permit process, we will also look at utility placement, all of that. Obviously, that's something developers, engineers have done now, um, but that's something we also do part, as part of that process, so. I will continue to communicate with the developer and their architect and engineering team to make sure that. We don't have a site distance, uh, issue at that corner.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Stinson?
Tammy, if you could just stay up for a second, I just more want to confirm this for the people that. Uh, the neighbors that are opposed to it, if we were to deny this, uh. Ordinance and everything to change the zoning, they could actually still build apartments there, correct, I mean, it is zoned that way?
Correct, so the current zoning is RG eight on all three lots that are there currently. The only portion of the property that has the planned subdivision overlay is the very northernmost lot, which is a very. Small and I would say insignificant lot. Um, the RG zoning allows for the highest density multifamily development that we allow in the city. It also has no height restriction. Um, so that, somebody could come in under the current zoning and they could do a very tall, uh, tall building. Uh, and probably still have more than enough room for required parking on the property.
Okay. Councilwoman Welch?
Um. Tammy, I'm not gonna need you, so, and I also received some calls from the neighbors that live in there and. Um, while they're not real happy about that going in there. In my research, I feel like this is the best use of this property. You know, in, in talking to Mister Jobin, we, we discussed that this has been platted. For this for fifty years. And it's been, um, under TIF for ten years. And it's just waiting for something to get developed and the developer went in and specifically looked. At this area that can, can appeal to people that want to work downtown, people that want to work it off it. And they looked at this specifically and I just, um, really appreciate the developer taking time to meet with the neighbors because they didn't have to. And it looks like they're going to create an environment that, you know, it's gonna have to be. Um. Good paying jobs to be able to, to live in this place. And, you know, in, in talking to the developer and, and Larry Jobin, it's, you know, when they meet with planning. Tammy really takes them through the hoops to make sure that this is the best product that goes in the best place. Under the best circumstances and even my conversation with her, she said that this is the best outcome for this particular property. And because of that, I'm gonna be in favor of this. And, you know, the, the neighbors are concerned about it and I said, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that. Things happen the way that they're supposed to and I know Tammy and all of our department heads that are in. And working with this will do everything they can and the neighbors I talked to said, you know, I said, you've got my phone number, reach out to me if there's something that's. Not the way you want it, but there's a lot of concerns about the what ifs. And unfortunately with the what ifs, we just have to let some things happen to let it play out to see if that actually happens and if we need to. Address those types of things.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just want to clarify a comment I made at the last meeting about the buses loading and unloading and leaving. Um, Mister Stinson was correct, Tammy Palm listened to the tape and OPS said they were gonna. Uh, drop off and, uh, drop off and load kids on the east side of the building. But they'd come up Child's and go down Nebraska Avenue to Chandler and a lot of that, and, and I do recall that conversation now because the concern was they didn't want to stack. Traffic buses. At Fort Crook backup because of rebel tracks, so I, I just wanted to clarify that I was wrong. Bob was right. Um, so I just wanted to make the sure that. Statement of how they were gonna unload and load and then leave with the kids on the bus, thank you.
Anyone else? Here we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson to approve ordinance number four zero one five, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item eleven B one, request to approve a small subdivision plat for lot one, Southwoods, replat four. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve item eleven B one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven C ordinance number four zero one four, Susan, would you read that ordinance description, please?
Ordinance number four zero one four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-fifth street and West Chandler Road. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Need a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number four zero one four.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Item eleven, thank you, item eleven C one. Request to approve a small subdivision plat for lots two and two A Kennedy Town Center replat seven. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve eleven C one.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item eleven D ordinance number four zero one six, an ordinance to amend sections eighteen dash one zero six. To eighteen dash one twelve of the Bellevue municipal code pertaining to reserved spaces for handicapped persons. Susan, would you read that description?
Ordinance number four zero one six, an ordinance to amend or revise certain ordinances as further detailed herein. Which have been affected by or generated by legislative changes. And to add or change legislative citations to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Councilman Shannon?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance four zero one six as amended last meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, item twelve ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A ordinance number four zero one nine, ordinance to amend section six dash twenty-two. Of the Bellevue municipal code pertaining to restraint of dogs. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero one nine, an ordinance to amend section six dash two-two of the Bellevue municipal code pertaining to restraint. Dash dogs, to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, I'll open that for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero one nine? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading and vote will be December one, two thousand twenty at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Public hearing on matters other than ordinances, there are none. Takes us to sixteen, current business sixteen A recommend approval and authorize the mayor to sign the simulated firearm equipment and training services agreement with. Virtra Inc. in the amount of forty-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Councilman Shannon?
Mayor, I move to approve item sixteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, comments or questions? Shannon?
Chief, can you, uh, come up and talk to this item for me? I, uh, I, I totally support this, this simulator gives you the, uh, shoot, don't shoot decisions and some very important training tools. But, uh, in our cover sheet, you guys checked this is not budgeted. And failed to tell us how it was being paid for, so if you could, uh, just, uh, talk to the. How that we're paying for this item, that way the public will know.
Absolutely, first of all, it is a outstanding piece of equipment, uh, that the city has purchased. Seven years ago, it went outside of their, uh, plan to keep it up two years ago. Was decided to move away from that, uh, contract at that time. Uh, there were some issues, uh, with some maintenance on it, needs to be upfitted, uh, we decided to attempt to get back into a contract for five years. Um, it was a clerical error, to be honest with you, uh, as far as how to track those monies that we were spending. Uh. It was intended the entire time to be utilized asset forfeiture money for that. Uh, which is exactly what asset forfeiture is intended for, one-time use money, not recurring spending items like salaries. So it actually fits well within the parameters for y- the use of asset forfeiture money. Uh, it was just, uh, didn't realize that it was actually, uh, classified as budgetary, uh, item. So that was my fault, make sure moving forward, we classify that correctly, so.
And I did check with finance and we have sufficient federal forfeiture funds to pay for this item and then some.
Absolutely, and we do have, uh, we believe we've got some asset forfeiture money coming in over the next few months to backfill that account as well, so.
Good job, thank you, chief.
You bet, thank you.
Yep, Councilman Cook?
I just want to make a quick comment, when we approved this, Mister Preister and I were on the city council and we approved this. And I can remember we came to an end of a budget year, the police department did. Real well with their budget. And so what they did was they presented this to us and we agreed. To purchase this piece of equipment and if any of you, uh, ever would get a chance, it'd be a nice to get invitation if the police are down there using it. It is an unbelievable machine to step into for officers to train with, I mean, obviously the best is out in the real world and doing things, but. You just can't go out and do this type of training out in the real world, but this machine is awesome. Uh, and if, if they're ever going to do training, they'd let council know, I would recommend anybody to go out, well, I'm sure. Uh, Mister Stinson has used it because he was a police officer here and, but it is a, it is a cool training tool with, and. It is very valuable, I mean, I, this thing's awesome. So I just wanted to throw that out there, this. Excuse me, there's probably not a lot of departments that have this type of machine, especially our, of size of our town. So we need to make sure we use it and use it a lot, thank you.
Yeah, to your point, you're, you're exactly spot on, um, there are very few pe- uh. Organizations in the Midwest, uh, that have this type of equipment, especially our size. It does set us apart, um, and we are looking to ramp up our training. Uh, in light of a lot of things going on, but, uh, for many other reasons, ramping up our training in two thousand twenty-one, that will be a key piece of that training and I would absolutely. Uh, encourage everybody to come over and, and try that out, it's an amazing piece of equipment and it does set us apart, so. We're very, very lucky to have that, so thank you for that support to get it here. So, thank you.
More questions? Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, uh, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, sixteen B approved purchase of Penlink PLX software in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen administration reports. Uh, comments must be limited to. The items on the current reports, are there any comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Uh, Jim and Councilman Welch, I saw that on your report that you guys met and kind of talked about, uh, sidewalks moving forward and sort of a plan, I was just wondering if you could. Brief us on how that, that conversation went? Or I don't know, either one of you?
You go on firework?
No, absolutely not, I'd give you a double bonus raise if I had, if I had the opportunity, so, but, um, Severson is here and he won't let me do that. Um, our task force is gonna be meeting. Tomorrow and, um, we're gonna get our, um. Bring the group up to speed as to where we're at and put a plan of action together, so I should be able to, uh, bring you up to speed. That, at the next council meeting or if there's, you want me to give you a phone call, I'll be happy to talk to you about it at that point. But it's a matter of, um. How do we get sidewalks in places that don't have them and fix the ones that are in disrepair and just get a plan of action moving forward? I think it's the best time of year to do it because I don't think we can be doing much cement work right now. And my goal is to have everything up and running by the time spring is here and I can bring you up to speed. Once, once we get moving along further on that.
I don't know if I, I missed something, but did you guys develop who's actually gonna be on the task force?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We have, you wanna?
You know.
Okay, so it is, um. Councilman Preister, Councilman Cook, myself. It is, and I don't bring my notes, but Tammy Palm. Um. Chief Clary. Oh, Dean Dunn, you, Jim Risto, um. Who else did I? There's ten of us, I know that much and it's, oh, Joey Bachman, Mike Christensen. So it's permits and inspections, code enforcement, Tammy, uh, planning. Think it's all the players that be and then, once we have formulated kind of the direction we're going, then we'll, uh, pull Rich in to. Talk about finance and budgets and those types of things.
Kathy, are you interested in having anyone from the public, I've got a, somebody interested in the public that would like to.
Not yet, not yet, I want to try and get us formulation and moving in a, in a certain direction.
But there will be a time when you'll get some public input.
Yes, we will, one, once we have it all kind of pulled together, then my plan is to go to Phil Davidson and put something out there that we can. Um, you know, either have a public meeting that people can come in and talk about their concerns or do Zoom or something to that effect, yeah, this is not gonna be something that we're just gonna say. Hey, this is what we're doing and too bad, it's, you know, we, I want to have a, a direction because we've had sidewalks. On the horizon for quite a while and for one reason or another, it hasn't happened. So it's to get it, the plan is to get it moving forward and, and get that accomplished.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, and to follow up, I had asked for, and I believe you also asked for. We have two ordinances on two sidewalk districts already that the council has passed well over a year ago. We have safe routes to schools that we can get grants for and we've used one through Public Works at Chandler View. We also have other resources, including Public Works was putting together a prioritization list. Of schools and sidewalks where they're needed most. All of that data and information is gonna be very useful to the task force. When are we going to get all of that information?
From my understanding is we're gonna bring every, um, bring everybody up to speed. At the task force meeting tomorrow with the background, the history, everything so that we're all on the same page and being able to move forward with regards to this. Because from what I understand, you know, we need to look at, is there, uh, grant money, bond money, ADA money, CBDG money, you know, all. We need to look at all of this and that is, you know, to bring all the departments up to speed as to where we're at, so we're all moving forward together.
And, and I appreciate that, I would just like to have access to all of the stuff that's already supposedly put together.
When I, um. When I, I worked, I, Tony and I worked together this afternoon and that was either coming out today or tomorrow morning. And then our meeting is tomorrow afternoon. So it does give some time. But, you know, if we, the whole point again is to get this group moving in the forward manner. And if we need to say, okay, we need to back up and reread everything, then we'll schedule something to be able to move forward again.
Okay. And I appreciate your leadership and I would like to see us keep moving forward.
The plan is to have a, a plan that, that is equitable and fair and gets us moving forward and getting that accomplished.
Thank you.
Any other question on the reports? Okay, we'll put those into record for the public. Those are on the website if you want to see what's going on. No closed session, so move to adjourn, anyone?
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, second by Cook to adjourn.
All voted yes.